Good evening. I'd like to follow up on the Cumberland School Committee meeting to order at 7:34 PM. Please rise, Vledge of Allegiance.
..............................................................................
Before we approve the agenda, there's been a request to move under item 11, new business discussion of living history event, Eagle on Their Buttons, a four-day march on the Civil War soldier into the superintendent's report about the recognition of achievements. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved second.
Motion by Mr. Mutter, chaired by Mr. ... Second by Mr. Salvatore and Mr. Duffy, and that includes moving that item up there? Yeah, you're good with that? Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is the student government report. Do we have someone here from student government? I don't know. Welcome. You have to let your sister out.
Oh, I know. A newbie.
We're here to talk about the upcoming and past events that student government has been involved with for Cumberland High School, including the February Community Environment Event. We visited local elementary schools to play bingo with these students.
Recently, we held our Daffodil Days fundraiser. Teachers and students had the opportunity to help support American Cancer Society by purchasing daffodils throughout the month of February. This year, we donated about $150 to that charity.
And from now until March 31st, CHS has been collecting peanut butter. That is going to be donated to local food.
On March 15th, teachers and students supported Aidan Nyberg and his family to Cumberland, Rhode Island, through their struggle with leukemia by wearing his favorite color orange to school. Orange t-shirts along with a variety of bracelets and ribbons were sold throughout the week with all proceeds and donations going to the Nyberg family to help out with medical expenses and travel costs.
Upcoming events is the inclusion of pennies for patients. It's a fundraiser to support the leukemia and lymphoma. The top three advisories will receive an Olive Garden luncheon for raising the most money.
Additional pennies for patients, we had our top three advisors raise about $750 each through their individual advisors. Coming up on Tuesday, April 2nd, we're going to have our last blood drive of the season. We're hoping to break our school record of 90 donors.
The freshman and sophomore semi-formal spring fling is coming up this Friday on April 5th, and that is for from 6 to 10.
I'm sure you guys already know, but April 15th and 19th is spring vacation. All the students and faculty teachers are excited about that. And from April 26th to 29th, Cumberland High School is attending grad night. Seniors in Cumberland High School and around the country are going to dizzy in Florida, and they're going to have a good time down there. That concludes student government's agenda.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes, special meeting 2/25/2013, regular meeting 3/14/2013. Approval of minutes, executive session 3/14/2013. Pleasure to be here.
Chairman, motion report.
Motion by Mr. DeMonica, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting on 3/14/2013. Report of executive session vote. I apologize, I don't have those minutes available, so I don't know the report out of the vote. There we go. That's the regular meeting. So we'll hold that till the next agenda. The next item is the report of executive session meeting on 3/28/2013. There were no votes taken on that evening. I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Chairman. There was no executive session meeting on 3/20/2013. That's tonight.
Hold on. Up. We can go back. Up to 3/14. So the meeting of 3/14, there were no votes taken in executive session. My apologies. I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session of 3/14/2013. Motion by Mr. Mutter, second by Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Next item, report of executive session, there were no votes taken. The meeting was not held, so we don't need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, and as we stated earlier, we were going to start with the living history event. Dr. Tor.
Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce all of you to Rob Goldman. And Rob has this really interesting program that he does with his students that he will provide some information for all of you about. I had the pleasure, along with the elementary principals, to meet with Rob and learn about this program that he has developed. And, you know, it really does bring history to life, so Rob will give you an overview of the program that our students, our elementary students and others, by the way, will be able to take. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, my name's Rob Goldman. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about our upcoming project, which is called an Eagle on Their Buttons. I brought a couple of flyers, so get these out and folks can share them and pass it on out. Like we do in school. In brief, the program is a four-and-a-half-day march by 14th Rhode Island Heavy Artillery, which was the state's Black Civil War Regiment. We reformed it back in 2002, and since then, the program has grown and grown. And this is a project that's being funded by the Rhode Island Council for Humanities. We start out at Chase Farm in Lincoln on the night of April 29th. We do programs for Lincoln Public Schools. Then we march up to the Kelly House in Lincoln, do another set of programs there, and then we march into Cumberland. And we're going to cross the river on the Linnville Hill Road and come on up to the Cumberland Hill School and set camp there. And the next day, the Cumberland students will be able to come and visit our camp and take part in five or six different activities and circle through and learn what it means to be a soldier during the American Civil War, and also to learn what it meant to be a black soldier during the American Civil War. So that's our program. It's dramatic. It's open to the public. We invite everybody to come, all ages, all grades, and we'd love to see you, young folks who spoke so beautifully, come and visit us. All of our soldiers are students at the NET High School in Providence. And that's it. If anybody has any questions, then we got to answer them. If you've got a minute, I don't want to take up your time. You've got a busy schedule.
Rob. Rob, what is the day that you expect that you'll be setting camp at Cumberland?
We'll be there on the afternoon.
It was May 2nd.
Afternoon of May 2nd.
Thank you.
Did we say on after the May 2nd? It's on the flyer. I expect to get a little confused myself.
I think it's May 2nd. But, I mean, just so that everyone knows, I mean, there is, you know, they will actually set up camp on the Cumberland Hill School grounds, and there is a horse-drawn carriage involved.
Yep, we have a wagon with a horse. These are trained horses. They'll be there. Prove the answer correct.
So right now, the plan is to expose at least some of the students from all of the elementary schools to this program, and they will, like I said, actually have an opportunity to see what it was like.
And I want to add to you folks, because I know budgets are a big thing. We pay for transportation, so if there's a school that's too far away from that one that wants to come see us, we'll pay for your buses. That's part of our plan. So it's free.
Thank you. Rob, any questions for Rob? Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, folks.
Looking forward to it.
See you all there.
Next item on the agenda is the recognition of achievements. Dr. Thornton.
Hello, good evening. We have several this evening. First, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mitchell.
It is, it is my pleasure to share this first recognition. I'm having a problem with my microphone. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Can we please, Susan Als, can you please come on up and locate yourself right here so everybody can see you? This is impressive. They'll all understand.
Okay.
Susan Als has been selected to attend the 2013 Symposium on Music in Schools and to receive the Yale Distinguished Music Educator Award. From a pool of nearly 300 nominees representing 45 states, Susan was chosen by a panel of music professionals for her outstanding accomplishments and a vision as a public school music, as a public school music teacher. This year's symposium will be held on Thursday, June 6th, with a welcome dinner on the Yale University campus for the 50 selected teachers and their guests. On Friday, teachers will be joined by local music teachers from the New Haven Public School System for several workshops and breakout sessions. Saturday will feature workshops and culminate with an awards dinner. As part of the award, all travel, rooming board, and conference expenses are paid by the Yale School of Music through the Yale College Class of 1957 endowed. On behalf of Dr. Thornton and the school committee, we would, we want to congratulate you on this outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations.
On Mr. Mark Tucker to please present our second award.
I'm Mark Tucker, Director of Food Service for Sedexo. Over the winter, we had submissions for a Future Chef competition. Just a little background, the Future Chef competition is a culinary competition where we allow students to serve recipes to compete for a live competition, and then the winner goes on to a national competition to compete with. This year was actually 1,700 students, 943 school sites in 28 states. We had, we narrowed down to 10 students, and they came to a live cooking event on March 9th at the high school, and they all prepared healthy salad recipes that they submitted. And this year, we had Mr. Andrew McGinn from Ashland Elementary School win with Andy's Super Salad. Andrew's recipe will be submitted for the national level and compete with the other winners from the other state, so we'll find out how well he does.
Thought it would be easier if we just hang out, because there are four awards today. And we'll start with the first two, and these were very recent awards at the 2013 Rhode Island Drama Festival for the play Apartment 251. And we have two great students here from Cumberland High School. They are part of the Cumberland High School Theater Department, and I have the distinction of knowing both of them. I know Hannah from the debate team at Cumberland High School, and I've had the chance to listen to her on a few occasions. I'm very excited about that. Also, I have Alex Haupt, who I've known since he was probably three feet tall and an actor from day one. So to both of you, Hannah and Alex, come on up. Congratulations. And in addition, I think we're joined this evening by Rep. Ackerman. We have two additional awards. I also have the distinction of attending the Rhode Island Forensics League State Championship, and two of our Cumberland High students secured the team state championship. And if you have a chance to watch it, it's on YouTube. If you Google Cumberland High School, I think, 2013 debate, you get a chance to see it. It's really fabulous to see Cumberland High students secure such an achievement. It was a lot of hard work, and anyone who's been involved in parliamentary debate knows that it really takes a true skill. So this evening, I'm joined by Rep. Ackerman. I don't know if you want to say a few words.
I just, I'm privileged to be here tonight to just recognize a couple of Cumberland High School finest, and I appreciate you letting me present the citations to, if they would come up to the podium, please.
So this evening, Cumberland School Department's certificate of excellent was hereby granted to Chase Bonney for winning the 2013 Rhode Island Forensics League State Championship. Congratulations. And Daniel Ackerman, as well as his teammate at the 2013 Rhode Island Forensics League State Championship. State of Rhode Island and Province plantations. Be it known to all that the Rhode Island House of Representatives hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to both of you in recognition of the outstanding achievement of winning the Rhode Island Forensics League State Championship. On behalf of the State of Rhode Island, the House of Representatives, I want to congratulate you. Next item on the agenda is the chairperson's report. I haven't done this evening. Next item is comments from the public. Would anyone in the public like to perhaps speak this evening?
Good evening, Randy Fontaine, 10-Foot Road, Chairman Bello, Superintendent Thornton, members of the school committee. I'm here to talk about NECAPs again. Last time I had a tooth, I just had a little canal, so this time I don't, but I have no excuse of slurring. Okay, I want to take about half an hour or so. Just wanted to talk about the NECAPs. Last time I talked about the numbers and the results and how they just didn't add up. Since then, there's been a lot of publicity. I'm sure you've all seen it. It's been on the news, it's been in the headlines in the papers and stuff. And the interesting, it stuck out this time, is people are now claiming that the test wasn't made to be a graduation requirement. And I found that kind of interesting, so I did a little research, and I just want to share that with you, because I'm not sure how much of you, how many of you are aware of that. So I did a little searching on the RIDE website, as a matter of fact, and I ran across this small document, 400-page report. I'm only going to read the first 200 pages. No, it's a, it's a report, it's called the New England Common Assessment Program NECAP Technical Report from July of 2012. And you don't have to go through all 200, all 100, 404 pages. It's filled with plenty of nice, interesting graphs and charts and formulas and stuff, which explain the theory and everything behind the test. But what I found interesting is right on page one, so I'm just going to read a couple "The purpose of the test is to provide A, data on student achievement in reading, English language arts, and mathematics to meet the requirements of (no trial left behind) and CLB. B, information to support program evaluation and improvement. And C, information regarding student and school performance to both parents and the public." That's it. No D that says valid for the graduation requirement. In fact, there's another sentence here that says, "The results are a status of, a status report of a student's performance against GLEs and GSEs and should be used cautiously in concert with local data." I searched for rest of document, there's nothing that adhered about a graduation requirement. So I found another document, a smaller one this time, a 70-page report, also dated July of last year, the New England Common Assessment Program, the NECAP, guide to using the 2012 NECAP reports. This one, you have to go all the way to page 6, where it states specifically, in the section "Use of NECAP Student Level Results." Let me find it. Okay, wait a minute. Okay. "NECAP is only one indicator of student performance, and results of a single NECAP test administration should not be used for referring students to special education or for making promotion and/or graduation decisions." It's right in their report, right from the RIDE website. I really can't understand why Commissioner Guest is so insistent on using it as such. Now, why is that important? It's real simple. The wrong test yields the wrong results. I mean, think about it. You go to a doctor, he runs the wrong test and then uses those results, you know, to diagnose your condition or prescribe medication. It's the same thing here. As a result of this wrong test, 102 students have been put at risk of graduating, and those 102 students will now have to go through this, basically an extended test prep program over the next year to basically and solely try and improve the scores on that one single test. That really doesn't pass the common sense test. And the problem, while we're speaking about the, you know, that test prep program, and for those that don't know, it's actually starting this year. Students will have to go after school one day a week to take preparation classes. They'll have to take summer school classes, and starting next year in the fall, they have to take a full-time class, you know, a regular class during the day called numeracy or literacy for English, just to prepare to retake the test. I just, you know, that is just so wrong in so many ways. You know, the one thing is, I think about how much time and money is wasted on that single program for the 102 kids. Not that we shouldn't do those 102 kids, please, don't get me wrong, but could that money and time be better spent trying to educate all the students? You've got ninth grade and 10th grade students that are coming up to take the new test. If we focus on the 11th graders alone this year, you're going to be in the same situation you get next year. It really just doesn't make sense. All those parents, you know, of the 102 students also received a packet that outlined the program and the goals. They actually don't have to pass, you know, achieve that 1134 score the second time off. They just have to show some improvement. There are so many things wrong with that. So just as a quick example, somebody scored, somebody who scores 1100 only has to score 1118 on the retake. Okay, not bad, 18 points. Somebody who scores 120 only has to score 126 or 128, I think. So it's a graduated scale, but now here's the problem. What if that student who scored 120 the first time scores 118 the second time? They won't, they'll still be at risk of not graduating, yet they scored the same thing as the other student who just improved. You could also talk about the, you know, they're taking this class, they, it's going to be, they'll get credit for it, but I'm just thinking about what are they going to do for a grade? Actually, that's kind of funny, because it's not like a class where they're taking tests. It's a test prep, so you're going to give them all As in taking a class? That'd be kind of interesting, because that'll throw off, that might actually help their GPA, but then throw off the ranking for the whole, the whole class, right? And you certainly can't give them a B or a C, because that would impact their GPA. So, again, wrong test, wrong results, and, you know, the whole impact just goes down through. So the reason I'm here is to really ask you, you've probably seen in the news also, that the school committee in Providence, and I think a couple of other districts, have sent letters directly to, you know, Commissioner Guest at RIDE and the governor, just stating that fact that, you know, it's a wrong test, it wasn't meant for that, it's putting too many students, you know, unfairly in jeopardy and at risk of graduating. So I'm formally asking you guys to do the same thing. Please send a letter to the, you know, RIDE and Commissioner Guest, copy to Governor and anyone else who can, but really say just that. This is not the right way to, you know, try and implement a graduation requirement for the students. That's simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fontaine. Next item on the agenda is old business bus transportation contract. The item is discussion and are going to approve resolution SCR 2013-07 Durham School Transportation Contract Extension. Chairman Mutter, was this in your subcommittee?
Chairman, yes, fiscal management did act SCR 2013-07. I'm sure as the actual, the actual date, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. There was some discussion in committee. We will be recommending passage of 2013-07. It was a discussion in committee that it be accompanied with the contract that a lot of the loose ends about this particular issue into one place, so that if someone wanted to get to the bottom of the transportation contract, it would be available. And so it has been passed to members this evening. I just want to make sure that we had a nice meeting at fiscal management with members of Durham. You have not seen this document, correct?
Just give it a copy, please.
Okay, so that we're not actually formally approving in 2013-07 the contract, but we would like to have it as, certainly as part of it. So I don't want to hold up 2013-07, but I want to give Durham a chance to look at, because I assume that they haven't seen the document prior to this evening. I just want to make sure that they're in agreement with it. I don't know if anyone wants, if Ms. Vogel, if you want to speak to this, I don't know if you want to speak to this. I think, I don't think there's anything new in here. It's just basically the same thing, but in one place.
Yes, I'm sorry. Basically, what happened was I was given a list of modifications or small changes that were made to the original 2005 agreement, which is of several pages with the bid spec. And so we put together just a contract extension agreement, because we're under a current contract that will expire on August 31st of this year, and in that contract, there's a two-year option, and we're exercising that option. And so instead of drafting an entirely new contract and going through that kind of whole several-month-long process of agreements, terms, and conditions, we basically just took the language that we've been following and added the modifications to and agreed that according to the fee schedule attached, which you have as exhibit B, that we'd be extending for the two additional years, which were the option in the 2010 contract.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, that, I mean, so basically, I want you to see it, and so we're not going to pre-submit those passes. We're going to recommend passage. Obviously, we're not going to hold you to any of these. Obviously, we're not gonna hold you to any of these things until you actually get to look at it, but I think, you have to ask the chair for that. But, so I'll pass it over to Madam Shay right now.
No, I'll, I'll send it right back to you. I'm not quite sure where you are.
Mrs. Schmuckler.
Thank you. Madam Chair, school members, yeah, I briefly viewed it this evening, and I think we had some dialogue around it. I think conceptually, I understand the, the language, the extension proposal. I think, you know, obviously we've gotta formally read it, execute it, but conceptually, we agree to what the concept is and how it's laid out, so we're not opposing, other than maybe a couple of these or those that change, but other than that, it looks good.
So I just asked that there is, it was, it was part of, you know, the committee's agreement. So if you do, I'd like you to get back to, you know, Ms. Vogel then at some point in time. We'd like to solidify the document. We're gonna, like I said, not gonna presuppose, we're gonna, we're going to make a, a recommendation to accept it, but if there are some changes, we'd like you to have it come back so that we actually have approved documents. I, I think you're gonna look through it, it's not gonna be much different anyway, but, but, but as we said, I, you know, we wanna make sure that you're okay with it. I don't wanna hold you to something that you haven't agreed to, so. But right now, what it does for, for us is delineate what has been already happening, and then it's, the exhibits are, are important as well, 'cause it has the, the most updated payment schedule. So this is just, we did discuss that evening, it was a big process. I don't know if Mr., if Dr. Thornton or Mr. Fian wants to speak to that, but we will, I'm gonna make a motion to approve SCR 2013-07. It wasn't unanimous, Vogel within the fiscal management. Just prior to the vote, just a point of clarification. Also, as you know, Durham's been working quite hard with us to look at options for a later high school start time next year. This current contract has not had any of that factor into it in terms of the bus total. I can tell you, we met today via webex and talked about another model, if you will, and we could probably within the next week or so have a fiscal sub meeting and bring that model to you, but just for clarity, this would not include that combination. As a teaser, I can tell you, to have the later high school start time, it could possibly approach a three-bus adds, according to what it looks right now, we're not done yet, but that's kind of what it looks like right now, just a preliminary, let's be clear.
So Chairman Lutter has moved passage of the Durham School Transportation Contract Extension SCR 2013-07. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello. Do we have any further questions or discussions for Durham? No further questions? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and our vote to approve the 2013-2014 school calendar. We have three calendars on the agenda this evening. The first is calendar A, which is the, I would say, kind of the typical February-April calendar. The, the second calendar is calendar B, which, if I read it correctly, removes the February vacation, but maintains the holiday on President's Day. In addition, it also has a professional development day on February eleventh, which I think has been a point of discussion for the committee. I was not at the last meeting, but I do understand that there was a discussion about moving that PD day. And then the last calendar is calendar C, which moves the school vacation to March, eliminating February and April, but just to note, it does maintain the President's Day holiday. So, Mrs. Teal, this was raised by you. I don't know if there's any discussion that arose from the last meeting that you wanted to, to highlight.
Not so much a discussion, but I, I can hear, I guess my comments. I like calendar, the reason this came up is I was concerned that there was such an extended break in December, and then lately in January, February, we're not getting any complete weeks of school. And it seems like a cost-effective way of improving student learning by not having them out of the classroom all the time during the winter. And it also is, as I've heard anecdotally for our working parents, it's difficult to come up with vacation coverage in December, then you're coming up with vacation coverage in February, then you're coming up with vacation coverage in April, and you haven't even hit the summer when you're trying to take vacation. So for those reasons, I was interested to see what would, what the budgetary impact would be on changing this calendar. My preferred method would be calendar C, getting rid of February, or shortening up February, eliminating April, and taking the week off of March, so you kind of are splitting the year, just like when we start school in September, we have it in December, we start again in January, we've got a couple months, and then we have the break, and then we're out earlier in June. I also understand that there's a bigger budgetary impact on that, because if we're in, if we're out of school and everybody else is in school, then we have to bus those children, because we are responsible for busing those kids to school. So if we can't do that, because I know that the budget is tight, doesn't bother me.
There's a budget though, it's really not a big number. I wouldn't say any calendar is a deal breaker as a budget, it's not a large number.
Okay. Then my preferred method, I'll go back to my preferred method then, would be C, to eliminate February, eliminate April, and have the break in March, so that there isn't more of a ability to keep the kids in school. We're still being impacted by snow days, and if we could get the kids out a little bit earlier in June, so they're not dragging this onto the last week of June, between the hurricanes lately and blizzards, we seem to be going to school right to the very end of, of June. I know that there has been some discussion on the statewide level, but when we met with RIDE the other day, they kind of threw their hands up in the air, were like, "I'm not, not talking about this." But they would like the superintendents to discuss that here.
It seems like every year we talk about it, every, the soup's talk about it, every year, so and so, "If you go, I'll go," and then it kind of ends. But I think, you know, option B or C are both fine options.
I think it's sort of time to, if we really wanna do it, I guess we have to be the first group in. And I know that, I believe Lincoln or Smithfield is discussing this also, as are other communities, and it seems like everybody's looking for somebody to be the brave community to do this.
Also, in that foster law studio, Crain's that are also looking at this right now.
So at this point, we have a discussion and our vote to approve a 2013-2014 school calendar.
I would like to make a motion then, to approve C, if Dr. Thornton is saying there's not a dramatic budgetary impact, I do not want to further burden the school's budget. I would like to say C. That's my first choice. Thank you.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Teal to approve calendar C. Do I have a second?
Yes.
A second? A second for discussion by Mr. Demonic. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you. Two things, I know we're discussing C at this point. This would go to Phil. On both B and C, can we move the PD day from the eleventh to the eighteenth in the February break, so that it's a four-day weekend in February?
Yes.
He said yes. So I can't make a motion, no motion, right?
No.
Okay.
So can I make a motion to amend my motion?
You would have to, Mr. Demonic would have to withdraw a second, and then you would withdraw your motion.
Mr.?
I'll draw mine.
Then I'd like to make a motion to amend Schedule C, calendar C, and move the professional development day, so that it takes place in February on...
Okay.
Yes. The eighteenth. On the eighteenth. So we have a motion by Mrs. Teal to amend the calendar to move the professional development day to the eighteenth? I'm sorry, I don't have a little bit to hear. For calendar C, which is the one where it's a March vacation, thus eliminating February and April. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Demonic.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Salvatore.
As, as I think Schedule C looks good, I'm leaning more towards Schedule B. I like the idea of the April vacation. I think a lot of events are planned on the April vacation, a lot of vacations by families have been implemented in place, and I think it's a good break for the springtime for the kids that have been, you know, had a long run, towards the end of the winter. So I'd like to, I lean more towards B.
Any further discussion? Oh, Mr. Duffy, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to get the last part of it before I, I, I lean towards C, but not for this coming calendar year. I lean toward B right now, because I believe that some families might have already made plans the next April. Sometimes you have to make plans a year in advance. So while I support C for the fourteen-fifteen calendar year, and I'd like, I hope that if we leave here tonight, I'd like to see B approved, and have us make it very clear to the surrounding districts and to the superintendent that we have full intention to move to calendar C with a March vacation in the year after, given the vote, but that's what I am on this. Thank you.
Dr. Thornton?
When actually to approve two calendars, we, it's really refreshing and good to actually have planning from one, one view would be really, really a nice, nice change.
So that would be for the following school year. Well, it's not agenda, so we couldn't take an action on...
Next time.
The, the following school year. What we do have in front of us is calendar C, with a motion by Mrs. Teal and a second by Mr. Demonic. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hold on, let's count up the ayes. Mrs. Teal, Mr. Fiorello, and those who are nays, Mr. Demonic, Mr. Duffy. Mr. Lutter? Is it a nay? Angela, I'm missing someone. Duffy. Just Salvatore. Sorry. Demonic. And, yeah, chair votes against this. I think moving, I like the idea that Dr. Thornton presented about moving it the following year.
I can't take credit for that.
Nice job, Mr. Duffy. So...
Then may I, then may I make a motion for...
Mrs. Teal. Pardon? So that was two in favor, five against, so that motion fails?
No.
So, Mrs. Teal?
Sorry, I would like to make a motion to amend calendar B, so that the professional day takes place on the eighteenth, and that we approve calendar B for the following school year.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Teal. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Duffy. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lutter?
So, is the motion to accept calendar B with the professional day the eighteenth of February?
That's correct. Thank you. Well, we can't take an action on C, we would have to agenda it.
Certainly, next meeting, I'll look at agenda for the fourteen-fifteen school year for C.
Sure. Any further discussion? Mr. Duffy?
Thank you. Can, when we put it on the agenda, is this something that can go out to the other districts, so that they, so when we approve them both, so they have a clear understanding that we intend to move in that direction, so that now that we have started the ball rolling for the districts hopefully to follow?
Tomorrow, first thing I can do that. Thank you.
We can also send it to the School Committee Association, so we'll do that as well. So I have a motion and a second for calendar B as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Salvatore, against. Chair votes yes. That motion carries six to one. Calendar B. Next item on the agenda is discussion and our vote on the superintendent's recommended fiscal fourteen school budget. Dr. Thornton?
Mr. Curnell, if you could come up with us out front and center, we're talking about the budgets. So in terms of our budget meeting on Tuesday, the big piece coming back with is, the committee wanted us to show the budget with the changes or the steps. I believe you'll be handing out at your place that reflects all the step changes by school. So that's the biggest change from Tuesday, showing the step changes for the CTA by school. Also, I know near the back of the budget, we also moved up the bracketed negative number of a million one or so for CTA above the total. Those are the two big ones, I believe, from Tuesday you're seeing at your places. Mr. Curling, I've, Mr. Curnell on the air for questions on budget format.
Does anyone have questions? Mr. Monica?
Madam Chair. I don't have a question right now, but we'd like to accept a resolution SCR 2013-09 as the FY 2014 school budget. I believe everyone has received that resolution at some point in time today, and if you had a chance to look through it, the first three pages will reflect the changes from the original budget that was proposed and has been discussed recently, as stated by Dr. Thornton, these changes reflect the, at least originally, we're gonna offer some amendments as well, they reflect the one million, one nine nine zero five eight and thirty-eight cents of CTA concessions that were originally built in to the document, and, and then, I'm not sure which page, but the page forty-six, where it's in the previous document, shows passing a budget that had a, that was unbalanced, that, that same number had been brought in the expense column to formulate a total budget in the amount of fifty-seven million, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. Fiscal management did meet this evening on SCR 2013-09, AKA the FY fourteen school budget, and is, and is gonna recommend passage to the full committee with a couple of amendments. The, the first one, so I'm gonna make a motion to amend on page twelve, the BS Norton line item fifty-six, four oh two, which I believe is library, library books. We're gonna move to amend that from two thousand to zero, and then on page sixteen, line of, or account fifty-six, four oh two into McCord, amend that from two thousand to four thousand. If there's no objection, I'm just gonna list the others and then, and forward that recommendation as amended. And the other change is, and further on down the docket, there's a discussion and our vote to approve 2013-08, which is this year's change to add math interventionists at the high school and the, to middle schools. The, on fourteen, these are gonna be FTEs, and they represent an expense of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. They are reflected in those pages as well. On the CHS, if you look on the first, you have page three, we'll also count the first page as the actual resolution. You see math intervention, so eighty-one, seven, sixty-eight, and then North Campbell and Middle School in McCord at twenty-four, forty-two. If you add those together, that's a hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. The remainder of the costs are in Medicare and certified retirement. So we're going to, they don't have the line items, but we're basically going to the... So we're going to, I don't have the line items, but we're basically going to, the amendment is to add math interventions at the high school and at the North Cumberland Middle School in McCourt to raise it from .5 to a full FTE. Is that correct, Mrs. Teal? The high school, does that represent one or two?
The high school, two.
That represents two. So two at the high school and bringing up North Cumberland and McCourt, each .5 to make them a full FTE.
Backup budget and personnel supplements, you can see those in the high school and middle schools.
So we recommend passage of the FY 14 budget, which is SCR 2013-09 as amended in the amount of $57,567,247.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello and Mr. DeMonica. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fiorello?
I just want to point out the reason for the moving of $2,000 from BF Norton to McCourt Middle School is BF Norton just secured a $7,500 grant for library books. So therefore, the $2,000 would be better spent at McCourt.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Mr. Mutter, this was before fiscal stuff related this evening? The amendments to the budget?
They were. The amendment for the math interventionist is at the request of the Chair for full-time FTEs. That was certainly supported within fiscal management prior to this evening as well. The other amendments were spoken about on Tuesday night for the, because of the inclusion of no-step, no increase from CTA that was built into the budget, is now reflected in the budget. And that's why the amendments for the grade school and the appropriate teachers are reflected. And the library one is, Mr. Fiorello discussed, just now was discussed this evening and approved as well.
Thank you. I just want to express my appreciation for the support of the math interventionists. I know it's difficult in this budget cycle, but I think the need was warranted. And while we certainly have a long way to go to rebuild our program in a stronger environment, I think this sends a message that we really are very achievement focused and there's a strong desire to continue that. I think it has great benefit to our middle and high school students. So I do want to express my appreciation. So we have a motion and a second for the budget resolution with amendments, $57,567,247.
Secretary Chairman, what?
It is, Madam Chair. I need, I need further discussion?
Further, yes.
The resolution actually, on housekeeping, it says in the amount not to exceed 57,497, 247, 257, 567, 247. Obviously, that should just read in an amount not to exceed 57, 567, 247. And I neglected to add that that obviously is an expense addition of $70,000 and the, there's a revenue increase that would obviously need to occur. And that is at the town appropriation, which would bring that to 1,693 even, which was previously 1,623, which was part of the amendment as well. So I'm just speaking to that, to that number, that you certainly can't ask for something that you have absolutely no possibility to get. And if, based on the state statute, you can, the maximum, you can raise the levies, just 4%. And 4% is still an unknown number as to what the levy will be this year, but around numbers would be in the vicinity of 60 million. The maximum, if the mayor and the council agree to, that number would raise about $2.4 million, of which we are requesting 1.7 of it in round numbers. And they have some obligations, they have some, I push it, they have some expenses in '14 such as revaluation, they're running a year behind on the actuary as far as their police pension. And there's a couple of other items which add up to somewhere around a million dollars. So if you're at 2.4 as a maximum, then you have a million dollars of other needs. You're at 1.4 or you're at 1.7. So, but there are things that could be done to get you to that number. So I just want to make it clear that this isn't an amount that can't happen. It is, so, because I would not support an allocation which I knew absolutely could not occur, but is possible. And I did mention that in my discussions with the Chair, that you certainly have to make sure that what you ask for, you have a chance of getting. So it will be, it will be a discussion certainly amongst other needs and how they, the mayor and the council see that as to their priorities and how they balance that with the needs of the education department. So that's my spiel on the levy. I could talk forever on that, but I know you don't want me to.
I always learn something when you talk about the levy, so we all benefit from the instruction. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And Chair votes yes, that carries seven to zero. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is positive behavior intervention and support, PBIS presentation. Dr. Thornton?
That is tabled.
Okay. I need a motion to table that. Motion by Mr. Mutter? Second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? Oh, we can't, not table, sorry. All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. We've covered item B, homeschool instruction request 2012, 2013 school year. Mr. Mitchell? Dr. Thornton?
There are no requests.
Very nice, thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion and our vote to approve resolution SCR 2013-08, amended fiscal year 2013 school budget. Mr. Mutter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. SCR 2013-08 was in front of fiscal management this evening, and we will be recommending its passage. This is to place the math interventionist at the high school and McCourt Middle School and North Cumberland Middle School as we have done for FY 14. This is done for the remainder of the, of this school year. It is accomplished by removing, amending the special tuition line from $1,700,000 to $1,680,000 to amend the McCourt Middle School. What line item is that? Is that substitute line? The substitute line item from $50,000, 250 to 55, 250. North Cumberland Middle School, the same, from $50,000, 250 to 55, 250. And the Cumberland High School sub-line from 1,34250 to 1,44250. So it's a $20,000 expense. It will not affect the total, the overall total of the budget. It's a removal of 20 from the special tuition and then the two fives and the 10. And I move passage.
So a motion by Mr. Mutter, a second by Mr. Fiorello. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Chair votes yes, that passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is discussion and our vote to approve overnight student field trip, combined middle school field trip to Washington, D.C., November 2013.
We have Dr. Masterson here this evening to answer any questions you may have on the proposed field trip.
Does anyone have questions for Dr. Masterson?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mutter?
I move passage.
So we have a motion by Mr. Mutter and a second by Mr. Salvatore and Mr. DeMonica. And Mr. Fiorello, you have a question?
Dr. Masterson, is there any difference in the trip for 2013 as there was for this past trip? Or the current?
There is a slight difference. It's that the aerospace museum we're going, that takes place in the mall, we're going to be going to the Dallas Airport. We have the plane museum there, which is much more extensive. We found that that would be a better experience for the students.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Chair votes yes, that motion carries seven to zero.
We appreciate your approval.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion and our vote to approve amendment to policy AFB, evaluation of superintendent. Mrs. Teal?
Thank you. I apologize for the lateness of this being on the agenda. We actually had taken care of this back in, well, late February. This policy today worked on revising, you know, evaluation of the superintendent to more align the evaluation with driving student achievement, not to kind of get away from some, away from some of the sort of subjective, I'd call them more personality traits or, I don't know, skill sets you would expect a superintendent to have, but to more focus on overall goals that we're trying to drive the district toward. So we've had this for you. There's included in this is a timeline of, to try to get us to comply with Dr. Thornton's contract, but things that we need to take care of during the course of the year. We're a little behind schedule right now with setting three goals, but we have our agreement with the strategic plan and kind of what those goals should be in theory. Then in July and August, what really should happen is in early summer, the superintendents that are right, provide a written self-assessment of where, sort of the State of the Union, what he accomplished over the past year, and where he believes the school system is and his goals, what he achieved, and what needs to be worked on. In July and August, he will meet with us, he's going to provide us with support, supporting documentation of what he accomplished. And then we're going to review that in July, August. And by the end of August 31st, we must complete his written evaluation so that if we end the school year and then we can start the new school year fresh. We put the evaluation in his personnel folder. In the fall, the superintendents get to develop three to five measurable goals supporting the district's strategic plan for the upcoming school year. The goals are presented to the school committee. We agreed upon goals. We will attempt to put measurements around those goals so that we have a way of really measuring the progress that we've made over the course of the year, the superintendent has made over the course of the year. And then we will communicate these goals to the public by the second Thursday meeting in September so that at the beginning of the school year, we set our goals, what the superintendent's working toward, and we close out the year at the end of the school year. So we kind of have a process that makes more sense. And in February, we would like the superintendent to make an interim progress report to the school committee, sort of on the status of the strategic plan and his performance to date on achieving the goals that we had set for him. So I would, this policy came out of Subcommittee Three to O, and I'd like to recommend to the full committee that it be approved as amended, policy AFB, evaluation of superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Teal. So you're moving passage on AFB, evaluation of superintendent?
As amended, yes.
As amended, thank you. So my motion, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, that motion carries seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is personnel recommendations. Mrs. Vogel?
Good evening. I'll come to start with the appointments. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following appointments. Jack Diaz, boys junior varsity baseball coach at Cumberland High School, effective March 20th, 2013. Matthew Smalling, boys junior varsity lacrosse coach at Cumberland High School, effective March 20th of 2013. Hillary Switzer, girls junior varsity lacrosse coach at Cumberland High School, effective March 20th, 2013. And also Dale Oldell, boys assistant baseball coach at Cumberland High School. This would be a volunteer position, that one. Those are the appointments.
Pleasure of the committee.
Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. DeMonica. I have a second. Second by Mr. Duffy and Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
None.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Chair voting yes.
Thank you. And lastly, I have a leave of absence. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the FMLA leave of Stephanie York, school psychologist at Cumberland High School, effective April 1st, 2013, through the end of the school year. And I know this is on last minute, it was mistakenly left off of one of the other ones. So we've had notice of this leave for probably over two months, and we have actually a sub ready to start. But for some reason, it was never approved by you, so we just wanted to put it on so you would approve it.
Thank you. Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Mutter? Second by Mr. DeMonica, Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Chair votes yes, the motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Would anyone wish to speak this evening? No? Okay. Last, we have school committee comments, school liaison reports. Do we have any school liaison reports at committee?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to say that I was a judge for the history fair at North Cumberland Middle School. And Mrs. Stike?
Stike.
Right, correct? Sun won first place. Am I correct on that one, too?
Be tied.
Tied? Tied.
Tied.
Tied for first place. But it was a very impressive history fair. I attended the one last year and I thought it was good, and this one I thought was even better. The kids were very well knowledgeable on what they were presenting. The displays were 3D and very realistic. It's always nice to attend an event like that at Cumberland and see how proud the students are. So, thank you.
Perfect. Congratulations to Carlos. Next item, Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Just one quick one. I just want to recognize Mr. Prignata, Ms. Vogel for their help at fiscal management for, we got a budget with a, you know, resolution, I don't know where Mr. Prignata is, is he gone? We actually got a resolution with a, I mean, a budget with a resolution number, and then we actually had, we made some progress on the Durham contract, being able to find it all in one place. I just want to, I don't do that often, it's kind of, but I do want to recognize you for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you both. And Dr. Thornton, no executive session?
No.
It's a good night, okay.
I move adjournment.
Let me get there. Okay, so Mr. Mutter moves it, adjournment of meeting. I have a second.
Second.
No second. Mr. DeMonica, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That meeting is adjourned at 8:42. Thank you.